Heather, are you? Gloria? Jimmy? And Heather, Lily? All right. We'd like to call the meeting to order at seven o'clock. My name is Brenda Stempel, I'm the Township Supervisor, and I am in Ypsilanti Township Civic Center. Clerk Rowe?
Heather Rowe, Ypsilanti Township Clerk in the Civic Center.
Dan Eldridge?
Dan Eldridge, Township Treasurer in the Township Civic Center.
Trustee Newman?
Dan Newman, Township Trustee, Ypsilanti Township Resident.
Debbie Swanson?
Trustee Debbie Swanson, President of Ypsilanti Township.
Gloria Peterson?
Gloria Peterson, Ypsilanti Township, Trustee.
Jimmy Wilson?
Jimmy Wilson, located in Ypsilanti Township.
And also present is Attorney Winters?
Yes, in downtown Ypsilanti.
Very good, all right. At this time, we have public comments, so if people have a comment, they can raise their hand. Monica Ross Williams?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, hello Board. I am just, I wanted to make a comment. I know some of the Board members may have heard by now about a statement that was said at the YMCA Board Meeting, and that would be the Board Meeting at the end of May, in regards to Ypsy Tucky, and the... The statement was made at the meeting. It was in the context of previously about, well, three minutes before, asking a question if the, if Brenda particularly, still supported having a recreation center in the eastern side of Washtenaw County. I want to make sure I predicate this by saying that I don't believe the Ypsy Tucky comment just referred to Brenda, I believe it referred to the community. And the statement was made basically after that, that it is the belief that Brenda supports a community center. Some further discussion went on, and then the person started speaking again, and when they started speaking, they said Ypsy Tucky. I was, made sure I let the Board know that I was highly offended, that it was upsetting, it was derogatory, and it was extremely, just, I don't even know, I can't, I'm trying to figure out the adjective, just not appropriate for a Board Meeting. It was not appropriate for a Board Meeting where we were, it's not appropriate to say the word, it's not appropriate to say the word as talking anywhere in regards to eastern Washtenaw County, it's offensive to the residents of eastern Washtenaw County, based on the history surrounding the word, and that basically it should not be said at that Board Meeting. And I also want to also thank Greg Dill, who spoke up very eloquently about the situation that happened. I also want to thank Ypsilanti Township Resident Avon Markham, who also spoke up about the situation that happened. I, I don't know if, you know, any apologies have came forward yet. For me, I don't really need an apology, because to me, when you say something like that, I don't think you really need to apologize, I just think, I need to know why. I hope the, you know, Board will also find out why that person thought that that was okay to use. And pretty much, that is my comment, and, you know, it's a sad occurrence, but in the same aspect, we're a strong community, and I know we will continue to push forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. Are there any other public comments? All right, hearing none, and we'll go on to the consent agenda. We have the minutes of the May 18th, 2021 regular meeting, statements and checks for June 1st, 2021, in the amount of $623,836.61.
So moved.
Support Gerald Rowe.
Motion Eldridge supports Gerald Rowe. Are there any comments, suggestions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Attorney Winters, any general legal update?
I'm in, Chair, I do have some general legal updates, and actually, one of the items that, I'm not going to go into detail, it does revolve around the YMCA. I've written some letters over the last year, especially to the new Board members, trying to bring everybody up to speed in regards to just what actually are the Township's obligations under our resolutions, and I think that as the Township begins to open up, hopefully, we can have in-person meetings, maybe, hopefully, in July even. I would like to go into a closed session here pretty soon to discuss a number of issues pertaining to the resolution of intent. And at the same time, I also wanted to point out that there's certain conditions attached to the resolution that, as far as I'm aware of today, have not been fulfilled. And in regards to, I've also received a number of documents that were filed regarding the $5 million earmark for what I believe is now referred to as Phase One of that YMCA site. I'm not sure it lines up with what the initial envision was vis-à-vis the first resolution. But I also want to, I'll be sharing with the Board in my follow-up correspondence, I did read and downloaded, actually, a copy of the feasibility study that was prepared by Vambeer and Township just recently regarding their proposed addition to their community rec center over there, and it was very professional done, it was done by Plant Moran, other architects. Took about 18, 19 months to complete a feasibility study. It goes through all the criteria, including population centers, and in their feasibility study, they actually included Ypsy City and Ypsy Township as part of their, the controls around the expansion of their community center. So there's a lot of things that we need, we need to talk about as a Board, and to give direction, because this is, this is already six months now into the, you know, 2021, and I don't really want to be in a position where at the last minute, have to come to any Board, or Board comes to us, and it's the 12th hour, but I think we need to have that conversation, especially because it involves nearly 25 acres of real estate in this Township that maybe we could have that meeting in a closed session in July. In regards to the DTE camera attachments, that, this is an issue that you've also been reading about from my letters anyways. The Township has 44, utilizes 44 of DTE's light poles, in which we have 48 cameras attached to 44 poles. And back in October of 2020, the Township received a very lengthy contract and for us to review and sign, and attached to that contract were documents that, if signed, would have made the current pole locations that we are, we have been using, and the attachments, they would be quote-unquote unauthorized, they would be considered unauthorized attachments, and would then actually be in a position where DTE could assess a very significant penalty. We met with DTE back in March in a Zoom meeting, I know that was attended by Heather, Brenda, I know Giovanna, Mike Radzick, I don't know, maybe some other people that were on Zoom, I didn't know who they were, but we met with them. I submitted a proposal, and today I did receive an email from Daniel Crabtree, he's their Principal Joint Use Facilitator, saying that he accepted the Township's proposal that we move forward in a direction of positivity where all the previous attachments and all the previous locations that we've been utilizing will be treated as being authorized. And going forward, there will be a process to follow, which will need, which will need to be followed by the Township, content, anybody else who wants to put up a pole, attachment to the DTE's poles. It doesn't sound like that the system that's being discussed tonight would involve DTE's poles, I don't know if that would always be the case or not, but if there is one that would be involved, there'll be a process to follow, and they will start building the Township on a quarterly basis, so there may be need to start making a budget adjustment yet this year, once we know exactly what that quarterly amount's going to be. I do think that, again, July, August, and September are going to be very, very busy times for the Township. I know the Liquor Committee continues to review and process liquor license applications, I reviewed too myself, that currently before the committee. We now been notified today that the staff representative for ASME, who had been out of the commission, so to speak, is now back and will be discussing some matters internally with ASME negotiations, with myself and HR Manager Karen Wallin, which may also involve the full-time officials here in the next week and a half. I do believe that the Township's Committee and Full-Time Officials Development Team has also been, continues to meet and sort of fine-tune the particulars of the industrial revitalization district, and I think that will probably be on target for some type of a public presentation, I would believe, in August and September, maybe, because again, our goal was to take it out, and at least have some public hearings on that new district, a lot of new uses being proposed in that district, could be opportunities for also to have some infrastructure in that district as, in that district as well. So I think it's going to be a pretty busy summer and fall, and the rest of the year, as far as that goes, in regards to trying to get some of these sayings addressed more preferably at public meetings where you're not so limited by the Zoom. I think Zoom's been great, I think we've all bought ready, we've had enough of Zoom, and so I'm ready to actually engage, I think, in a better forum than, I mean, you all look great, but at the same time, I'd like to be able to sit there, and, because sometimes you think of things later on, you can't really go back and raise your hand, you can, but you do so at the risk of being told by Heather, I'm out of order. So I'll take note of that, but on a serious note, I do think it'll be great to get back and get into the boardroom and actually feel like we're functioning as a municipality doing the people's work. And this is just a brief summary of some of the things that continue to go on, we've got a lot of other neighborhood stabilization issues that are on the agenda tonight, and I would just say, without going into detail, that we've discussed many, many times, that as much as we've put into the neighborhood, the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, and as successful as it has been, it doesn't take long for it to be turned around on its head in a very, very quick timeline if we don't remain vigilant. And Township cannot be everywhere and every time, but we do have a great network of neighborhood watch groups, and with the assistance of Robin Castle Heine and many other people, we do get information from houses that we can then pass on to the OCS and the Sheriff's Department as needed, because without their continuing vigilance, it'd be very difficult to keep up. So a lot is coming at you, I believe, but at the same time, I think you're ready to go. That concludes my report.
Okay, so we'll work with you in scheduling the closed session in regards to the property and the YMCA proposal, make sure that their proposal is in alignment with what the Board actually approved back in 2018, or 2019, and then it was reconfirmed by this Board as well, and extended, so we do, we have more information than we did then. Several YMCA's across the United States and in the state of Michigan actually closed, you know, and as a person who has great faith and believes things happen for a reason, this time delay actually shown a lot, you know, it shined light on things, the comments were one, and what people think about our community at their YMCA Board Meeting, but more so the business plan of YMCA. So our residents were promised 11 years ago a rec center, and we still don't have one. So it's a dream come true to have it, our residents deserve it, and we'll continue to work towards that end, but I think there are, there is a lot more information that has come to light since the original proposal was presented to our Board, so we need to make sure we're, we're in alignment and discuss it, you know, as a team. It is 25 acres, the value's 5.4 million, I think, was that correct? And that was in 19, so a lot of contribution of taxpayer land, and we just need to make sure it's a win-win for our communities, and that includes the city of Ypsilanti, Ypsy Township, Augusta, and Superior Township that will have access to a recreation center as promised. So we're going to continue to move forward on that, and I look forward to having a meeting done as a team, and hopefully together. I do know that Heather researched it a little bit about having a meeting, we have to determine the, the amount of people that can come in, and if you're vaccinated, we can have a meeting and not have separation, you don't have to wear a mask if you want to wear a mask, you know, I would say, whatever makes people comfortable, that's what we do, but they did open up the amount, you can limit to 25, but you can also do 50%, so we just have to figure it out as a team here, and the Safety Committee will help with doing that, but we should be able to figure out by our meeting in July. All right. The next item on the agenda is new business, it's a request for approval of a personal leave of absence for a Teamster employee in accordance with the Teamster bargaining agreement.
So moved Gerald Rowe.
Support Peterson.
We have a motion and support to approve the request discussion. This is in accordance with the policies and procedures in the union contract, to request of the Board to have a longer extension. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number two is request to waive the financial board, below quote, "to contract welding for the replacement of a boat dock at Ford Lake Park in the amount of $8,859," budget in line item 212-212-000931775.
So moved Eldridge.
Support Wilson.
The information was in the packet, I know that Michael Hoffmeister is also on the line, if anyone has, or on the Zoom meeting, I'm sorry, on the Zoom meeting, if anyone has any questions, let him put your phone down, please. Any questions or comments? Mr. Winters?
Yes, I would just make sure, if Michael can hear me okay, that even though the contract amount itself is, you know, 8,000 plus, I think that we still need to have a copy of the contractor's certificate of liability insurance, just showing that he has workers' comp and his employees, and just having a certificate of liability insurance, I'm sure they carry them on a regular basis, but sometimes it's the smaller projects that can give you the biggest headaches from a legal standpoint, not expecting anything to go wrong, just like to have on hand a copy of the insurance, just confirming that employees are, that he is carrying workers' compensation insurance, and if he's exempt, then so be it, but I don't want the Township to be in a position where they could become the statutory employer by virtue of someone being injured, and just to make sure that we have on file the liability insurance. It's not going to cost any, I mean, whatever insurance he has is what he has, and that's why I get a copy of the, copy of it.
It should be in the checklist of items, right, Mr. Hoffmeister, can you?
Yes, that's, that's correct, I will verify that the liability insurance and workers' compensation coverage is included before we proceed.
So the boat docks need to be replaced, basically, at Ford Lake, and the parks were off the hook this weekend, I mean, there was so many people that went through, it was amazing, they kind of forgot the rules, so we had to help them with that, because people have been free, free for a long time, and no one checking people in, and we have a new system, and the staff did great, and the police helped when needed, but no smoking in the park needs to, is an issue now, that wasn't before, we're seeing, we saw it more on opening day than we've ever seen it, so we're adjusting that as well, and going to put more signs up, but Robin and her team did an excellent job this weekend, and new seasonal workers, and they did a great job, so I love that people are using our parks and having a better boat dock, I know, Mike, a lot of the boaters have requested that, and appreciate you finally making this happen for the safety of the boaters as well. So we have a motion and support contingent upon making sure that all the items necessary per our attorney is in the contract. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? Number three is a request approval of change order number one to the Professional Services Agreement with Stan Tech to rebid the Loom Feather renovation project in the amount of $3,850, which is budgeted, and contingent upon approval of the budget amendment.
So moved Gerald Rowe.
Support Swanson.
Motion Gerald Rowe, support Swanson to approve the rebidding of this project, so I don't know if people are just too busy, or what, the community center, I think we did three times, so this is the second time on this one, so let's get Loom Feather, we have the grant, and there's a match to it, but we hope to rebid it and actually get that work improvement done, still yet this year, I'm not sure, but we're going to try. Any questions on the Loom Feather? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. For us, a request to authorize Circuit Court litigation to abate Public nuisances, which is located at 1532 Outer Lane, 752 Oswego, and 276 Devonshire, which are budgeted.
So moved Eldridge.
Support.
Motion Eldridge, support, was that Gloria?
Heather.
Heather, I'm sorry, Heather, my head was down, not good. Heather, I'm not sure if you want to share the pictures, or...
Oh, yes.
The pictures are, like Doug was talking about, you know, neighborhood stabilization, we have to stay on top of, this, or it could slip quickly. And Mike, are you on the line, Mike Radzick? Michael, Radzick? I thought I, whoa, hey, Michael?
Yes, I am here.
How are you?
I'm good.
That picture, I'm just saying. Want to go through it, Mike?
Sure. The first one on Outer Lane Drive, that's at the very southern tip of the West Willow Neighborhood of McCartney. This is a property that our staff has been out to more than a dozen times over the last couple of years, the property owner is well-known to them, both at this location and previous places that he lived. We've just not been able to get any kind of significant lasting code compliance, as you can very well see from these photographs, which in all actuality are just the tip of the iceberg at this property, so we're asking for your approval to engage in Circuit Court to get a lasting, permanent solution to this one. The third one on Devonshire Street is a vacant house, it's been vacant, to our knowledge, just for a few months, but as you can see, it's run down and very bad condition, by its owner is a Mr. Jason Mortimer, we've tried and tried, we can't find him anyplace, using all of the resources at our disposal. We've continually spent tax dollars to clean up the blade on the property to mow the grass, and there's no reasonable hope for a solution, other than going to courts, and we're asking for your approval on this one. The third one, 752 Oswego Street, which is also in the West Willow subdivision, is a bit out of the ordinary for the type of case that we asked for your approval for. This is a rental property, there's a photo of the house there, and they gave you a Google GIS image to show you that it's right in the thick of a highly densely populated neighborhood, with a lot of other folks around it that are affected. This house was vacant for many years, and then the current owner purchased it recently, and this is the very first tenant that they put in it. And much to our dismay, as well as the dismay of the sheriff's deputies that patrol the neighborhood, on May 8th, there were two different 911 calls to that house within that 24-hour period, both resulting in massive police responses. The first one was just after midnight on May 8th, neighbors called because the street was blocked with people and cars, when the police got there, they saw at least 300 people attending a party at this house. Many of the people, when they observed the police arriving, took off running through the streets, jumping fences through neighbors' backyards, et cetera. One fistfight broke out between partygoers and one of the neighbors who was highly upset. The police eventually were able to restore order, less than 24 hours later, just before midnight on the same day, more 911 calls, this time about 100 loud, disorderly people, again, attending a bonfire at this very same house, and the same thing occurred, police got there, people started running away, fistfights broke out, tires squealing as partygoers were leaving. The deputies talked to the tenant, they also talked to the landlord, and he responded out there and essentially told the police, "Well, if it happens again, a third time, maybe I'll think about doing something, that's not good enough for us." The calls for service to this property since these tenants moved in shows that there's regular and ongoing loud noise disturbances up until 4:00 in the morning, and the neighbors are fed up, so we're asking for your approval to engage in Circuit Court with the landlord and the tenant to put a permanent end to this unacceptable behavior.
Questions or comments by Board members? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is request authorization from the Supervisor and Clerk to sign an agreement with DTE for lighting for the US 12 Phase Two Road Improvement Project with yearly operation costs not to exceed $35,000.
So moved Peterson.
Support Eldridge.
Motion Peterson, support Eldridge. Other questions or comments about this, or do you want me to go over them? So we've been meeting the three full-time officials. you want me to go over? So we've been meeting the three full-time officials while not meeting, because we can't. But we've been going back and forth with DTE on the layout and design of the Phase Two. So we think we have one, but we're not 100% sure, which is why we said don't exceed 35,000, which is what the, the current plan is. It's just that they, there were too many. And it was like an airport almost. It was very, very well lit, exceedingly well. So we have to make sure that, you know, it matches and doesn't have excessive lighting. We've learned a lot about two, there's going to be a light pole with two lights that go over for the walk path. That's going to be, go down the service drive, which is part of the design of the new project. And then there's going to be pedestrian path that leads up to E Course Road. And there's going to be lighting on that. And then on eastbound and westbound. And off the exit ramp that's currently there for Michigan Avenue going west, if you're heading to Ford Boulevard, that too is going to be lit. It was not previously lit before. So we just want to make sure we're not over lighting it, you know, when it's not necessary to have that many lights. I think Phase One project went very well. If people drive down there at night, there's, and it's staggered lighting. And I think it does make it safer. There was unfortunately a drunk driver that instead of going, continuing down E Course Road, they veered off into a head on, and had a head-on collision at the Y there, which is right after the bridge. So I'm not sure if anyone could have prevented that accident. But I do think it, the likely was much, much better and a safer drive than what it currently was. So the Phase One lighting was about 16,000. This proposal is about 35,000. And that is a long-term operation and maintenance of the street lighting. So if we, with your permission, we'll sign the agreement once it's, we found several errors and counting them and go, we've been through it forever. We're actually going to meet with DTE on Thursday in person. So we can go over and make sure it's, it's accurate. All right. Did anyone have their hands ready? Heather, you did?
Yeah, I think you covered most of it, Supervisor Summo. And I would just like to add that, you know, throughout this whole US 12 project, I would say that Brenda, Stan, and myself, we've, I've been, you know, just very watchful and thoughtful about all the funds and how they're being spent. It's such a big project. So it's really important for us to just have a careful eye over how we're spending these dollars. And, you know, we don't want to compromise safety in any way, but we also want to try and keep all of the alternatives in as much as possible because residents in that area and in our community deserve a beautiful entryway to Ypsilanti Township. And so, and we are going to meet with DT in person, but only outside because that's their policy. And Brandon was, you know, he's been a wonderful help at DTE and probably have been super annoying to him. But we're thankful that he is going to meet in person with us outside in accordance with their, their policy at DT.
So we currently have five lights and it's going to, what was it, Stan 96? Was that the?
96.
Yeah. So that's going to be a big change, you know. We want to make sure that we're not overdoing it, like Heather said, and having excess, you don't need excessive lighting. That's not who we're about. That's not what our residents are about. But we want it to be safe. And I think the original budget for this was around 400,000.
Right.
And it's going to, we've reduced it by reducing the number of lights. So every dollar that we save on this in, in the capital installation can go for some of the things that were eliminated from the bid because it was over budget. So every dollar we save helps with the complete plan of what we wanted to add from the very beginning. All right. We have a motion and support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Budget amendment number eight. Quick row. Gerald Row?
Yeah, I have motion to amend the 2021 budget. And this is again about the boat dock that we discussed earlier. I would move to increase the bike sidewalk rec road fund budget by $3,850 to $1,945,98 and to improve the department line item changes as proposed.
We have a motion?
Support. I'm sorry.
Peterson.
Yes. Motion Gerald Row, support by Peterson to approve the budget amendment.
Yep.
Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. There's no other business? Board member updates?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Trustee Wilson?
Yes, wanted to, quick disclosure, my computer, I have some computer issues during the meeting today. My computer updated. And then I had to pull my phone out and try to zoom from there. And then the computer started back up. And so I was zooming from two locations. But I say all that to say, I can't wait till we're back in person. And hopefully in July, and we can be back to somewhat of normalcy.
Agreed. Thank you, Trustee Wilson. Any other questions or comments or updates by board members?
Madam Chair, I will just quickly do a couple things. A few of us on the board here have been working a lot with quality of life meetings. And we're hoping to roll out some of those improvements with, in partnership with the county sheriff's office and Habitat for Humanity and the West Willow Neighborhood Watch Association. And we're hoping that the first part of it are going to be signs. And I think that they were ordered today. So fingers crossed. The signs focus on, you know, the positive behaviors that we want to see implemented, as well as focusing on, you know, the law of immunity that we have in our township and just sort of spreading that good message. We've started here in the clerk's office with lots of election prep and getting things ordered and ready to go for our August 3 election. Just a reminder for that, all of our ballot proposals. We talked about a mailer that we did a budget amendment before. And we received, I mailed that out, I think on Friday to all for feedback. And we got approved today that I just sent over to Stan and Brenda, just because more eyes are better than none, or two, my own two. So that, and then just general, you know, carrying ons. What else did I write down here? I think that's all, that's all I got.
Any other board member update?
On the note of the mailer, just a slight thing that I noticed, on the back of the mailer with the, under the police and fire, right after, when it talks about charter township, it misses the O, and it's just an F with Ypsilanti. Turn mute. You on mute?
Heather, what were you talking, which ones were you talking about?
The two boxes with the fire and police about midstream, mid, middle of the paragraph. When it talks about the charter township, it's missing O of, in, yeah.
Good catch. See, I said more eyes are better. Thank you.
Very good. And as we all know, this is not an increase in the levy.
Right.
So that's the message that we're, well, that's the truth, too. So it's the same millage levy as 2013.
Which is really, right? I think that's incredibly impressive of the township board leadership over the last, what is that, eight years? So, thank you.
It's impressive. I, I just want to say, too, that I like Jimmy and looking forward to meeting in person. I know we have a lot of issues to discuss, but I think we can take care of those in person by attacking the ones of, well, they're all of a priority, but the ones that are, that seem, that will take less, less, what I want, what's the word, less, less, not less discussion, but the ones that can be solved faster than others. I think we would be able to do that in person. And so I'm looking forward to meeting in person.
Agreed. All right.
Chair, I just wanted to thank resident Monica Ross Williams for attending the meeting tonight and sharing her concerns. And I want to thank her and the other two individuals that she said spoke up on behalf of our community. I'm disheartened to hear that in any public meeting, there was anything said that would be considered by a resident to be derogatory towards our community, because that's not what we're hoping for. And I know, as we've been working with other entities on like the project that the signs are coming from, the importance of the idea of our community pulling together and being united and being proud of like who we are and the people that we are. I know as a new trustee, and even when I was on the park commission, the way that our staff interacts and works on our behalf, and the amount of time and care and concern that the board puts into the work that they do. And then just being out with the residents, like the neighborhood watch, being around people, the event that just took place in honor of veterans on Monday. To think that any entity would reduce us to something that doesn't express the strength of us is not acceptable behavior. So I want to thank people for speaking up when they heard it, because that's what they, I mean, that's, that's what needs to happen. When you hear something, say something. And that's always not an easy thing to do. So I appreciate those three individuals speaking on our behalf. And I just want to express how disheartening it is to hear that that happened.
Very well said, Debbie. Very well said. Very true. All right. We have a motion and support to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Motion Peterson, support Eldridge. The time is 7:43. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you. Next time in person.
All right.
Thank you.